I'm calling to order the school committee meeting of October 19th, 2015. It is 5:30 PM. I've called to order this meeting is being both audio and videotaped. Is anybody else audio or videotape in this meeting? Seeing and hearing them, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Full call starting to my far right.
Aluna Tilly, student rep. Kathy Saloni, record secretary.
Pamela Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Bill Fonseca.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Mitch Fruchero.
Deirdre Mayhew.
Gregory Thompson.
Elizabeth Marcy-Machar.
Thank you. Moving to item number two approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the October 5th, 2015 regular session meeting minutes?
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Seconded, thank you. Any discussion? Oh, as a favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Janamus Mr. Letty. Committee and subcommittee communications. Um, okay. Shall we move on?
No, yes.
Go, go.
Um, just again, the grant process is starting with ELIF. Uh, so the teachers are going to be contacted and if they are interested in submitting a grant, they should do so by November 13th. Um, they're going to be giving sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand dollars this year, which is a little less than normal, but people are not coming to events. You must come to events, or then you don't get the money to spend. So, I'll go with that.
And they have a liaison for each school, I believe.
They do, yeah. There will be somebody contacting each school and getting together to speak with the staff.
Excellent, great.
Hope asked Mr. Chair, thank you.
I just wanted to mention one thing that happened at Berchlin today, um, with the one school, one book. They did the book Peak by Roland Smith and they had the author come and visit the school today. And my son is at that school and he just said what a great day it was that the author was very enthusiastic to be there, very engaging with the students. Um, so it's very positive for that to be happening in our schools. So if you get a chance to read the book, you should read it.
Gave them some writing tips, I hear.
He did, yeah.
Good. Bill? Uh, just update last Thursday, uh, MASC Division Five met over at the collaborative, just continued the discussion on the upcoming resolutions for the conference next month.
All right, if I may. And the Division Five, new president is Arvarian.
All right. Good. Thank you. With the power, good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Tilly?
Um, this week is Spirit Week, so we get to show off our Spartan pride. Um, and today was America Day, so we wore our red, white, and blue. Um, tomorrow is Talent Tuesday, so we get to celebrate our school activities and talent. So, for example, um, I know some, uh, sports teams are going to be showing off their, um, talent. And Wednesday is Way Back Wednesday, so, um, you get to show off your retro look and...
How far is Way Back?
My daughter's such good for the eighties.
That's way back.
Um, Thursday is Class Color Day, so, um, ninth graders wear white, 10th graders wear green, 11th graders wear blue, and 12th graders wear black. Um, and Friday is Red and Gray Day, so we show off our Spartan pride wearing red and gray.
And Ms. Tilly, you will let us, keep us in touch that the administration is participating in these press updates too when the next meeting, right?
We do want to know.
Okay, just want to make sure she'll let us know next meeting, just want to make sure.
It's not doing Way Back.
Well, that's the one we want to see.
Go Way Back to last week.
Go back to our yearbook papers.
There you go.
As far as my report, I'll say, but for 5.1.2 on our agenda. Uh, number four, opportunity for business to address the committee. There's none for that. So when we went along to presentations, Mr. Smith, superintendent's report, 5.1.1 ELHS MCAS presentation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fruchero, we have here, um, our, uh, few administrators, actually, of our director of curriculum instruction and assessment, and our high school principal, and we have one of our high school assistant principals who will walk us through, uh, the East Long General High School MCAS results. And then if you, uh, remember, last year, uh, we were three through eight, a park district, and then the high school continued to take, uh, the MCAS exams as their graduation determination. Without further ado.
I don't get a chance to, um, give a shout out to the high school very often, so in addition to MCAS, I just want to say we're off to a really great start this year at the high school. Really positive, I, our teachers, um, are really working hard, but I got to say the senior class is completely setting the tone and they're just a great bunch of kids, so I think we're, we're going to have a great year. Um, so we are here to talk tonight about our MCAS scores. Um, we saw some successes and we saw some areas that we are committed to improving and working on. Um, Frank's going to take us through the ELA portion of it and then I will lead you through the math and the science.
So, the first slide you see in regards to the ELA data is, um, our advanced proficient needs improvement and warning scores compared to the state data. Uh, and if you look at the first bar, obviously we did scores significantly higher, um, in the advanced category compared to the state averages. Um, proficient, we're about on par with, uh, the state, but that's really just because our, uh, advanced data is so high. Um, and just in terms of needs improvement and warning, uh, we only had 3% of our student score in that, in that needs improvement category with, uh, no failures, as you can see at the very end. Uh, so that's, that's great for us, you know, no students are going to be having to repeat the ELA.
President.
Uh, your next slide is the, um, is the progression of the student scores from, uh, from grade three through grade eight. Uh, and the first part, and then you see a break for grade nine, and then, uh, the grade 10 data, which is, um, last year's student scores, uh, for the MCAS and ELA. So, uh, what you see at the very bottom right-hand corner is the 2015 scores for our sophomores, where the advanced proficient, um, combined for 96% of our, of our testing students. Uh, it is a very slight difference from previous year, however, uh, if you look at it in comparison to the, uh, previous five classes, was actually our biggest increase in percentages over the last five years. Um, so, uh, you jumped from, uh, 85% to 96% with that class, which, like I said, was our biggest jump from eighth grade to 10th grade, uh, over the last five years.
You look at the classes, if you remember, on the cohort?
Yeah.
So you're, you're looking at that 85, there's a break in the grade nine, and then the 96.
Yeah. Even our highest score, where they had 98%, it was at 88 in eighth grade, and then it was, uh, 92 the previous year from 84 in eighth grade, so, uh, it was a great jump.
Nice, nice continuum of scores improving as we go through each grade.
And, and if you, uh, look at math, you're going to see a very similar thing when we get to it, but it is our biggest jump in math from eighth grade to 10th grade in the last five years as well.
Stealing my thunder.
No way.
Uh, so, jumping on to the next slide. Uh, and this is really, the first statement is, is the big, uh, takeaway from this year and the big positive that we're very proud of. We had a huge jump in the number of students achieving advanced status. So 44% of our students in 2014 achieved advanced status on their ELA MCAS scores, and this year it was 50% of our kids scored at that advanced rate, which is great. So half of our students were in the advanced range. Uh, our CPI remained relatively the same at, uh, 99.0. Um, also, a big thing for us, a big takeaway for us this year is our response scores went up, uh, by 2%, 65% to 67%. And we see this as a result of our big push for, uh, response writing at the high school with our common assessments. Uh, and then we were above the states in, uh, percentage of correct items in all standards, you know, so it wasn't just one category or another, but it was across the board. And obviously, which is most important to us, no students failed.
Questions about ELA before we jump to math?
One more slide for ELA, correct?
Oh, sorry.
Yep, yep. So just next steps. Um, the common assessments are complete and will be fully implemented this year, so the process that we've been working on for the last couple of years in terms of, uh, working on standards-based assessments to generate data, uh, into different classes and using that data to drive what we're doing. Uh, those are now in place, and for English, obviously it focuses in, uh, things that are MCAS-style, um, questions and, uh, MCAS-style responses. Uh, they're going to use that data to target areas for the department to work on. Um, and the English Department PLC this year, the professional learning community, is working on focusing on the writing rubrics that they've developed over the last couple of years and best practices for writing instruction to keep those open response scores going up.
Response, is that nine through 12, all subgroups?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, our math data. If you take a look at our math data, one thing that we're very pleased with is that we are maintaining a very high percentage above the state average in terms of our advanced and proficient. Um, as you can see here, it was 81 of the high school advanced proficient and the state average is at 68. So if you look at it in terms of state, we're doing very well. Uh, this, this, this chart that you have, if you're familiar with it, I find it to be the most powerful because it really gives you a great snapshot, um, how our, our students are doing across the district. And as you know, um, the issues that we are facing with math is really something consistent throughout the district and, um, which brings us to some of the things that we're doing to kind of improve upon that. But one of the things that we are, are happy to consistently see is that, um, students from the time they leave eighth grade and enter, um, their 10th grade year and are taking the MCAS, we see huge growths. And again, as Frank kind of pointed out, this year was the highest, highest growth from eighth grade to their sophomore year with a 38% growth in advanced and proficient ratings. Uh, when I took a look at the MCAS data, I always take a look at from locally, regionally, and nationally, and, um, as you look in the grade 10 column, you're seeing some slight dips in the advanced proficiency score. Certainly nothing to be alarmed about, but something that we have to be proactive and react to as well. Uh, we are seeing dips consistently throughout the state as well. And so there are several variables that we are committed to looking at. We've started to, sort of do that a little bit last year. Uh, but one of the things that, um, we think that we are taking a look at, at the secondary level versus curriculum. Uh, one of the things we have to ensure is that our math curriculum, the standards that are being taught in our math curriculum are consistent with what our students are being assessed with. And we've started to do that. One of the things that we were assisted upon last year, for example, is that the Algebra I class that is currently offered at Berchlin Park, we wanted to ensure that that was the exact class that was being offered at the high school, so that when the kids moved on to geometry, there was no gaps in curri, in the content or the skills. So, um, we worked really hard to do that. I think that the curriculum scope and sequence is perfectly aligned. Um, the eighth grade, um, Algebra I to class is taking our common assessment in our midterm and our finals, so we can use that as a barometer in terms of placement for when it comes to high school. So that was one thing that we're looking at. The other question that, um, we're asking is, are our students who are coming from Berchlin being properly placed in the appropriate math class? Uh, one of the things that our teachers, our math teachers were giving us feedback was that there was a concern that perhaps students were not, were being pushed into Algebra I too soon. And so we started to look at data. Dr. Allen and I and, and Ms. and your have been looking at, um, the placement process and how that occurs. And so one of the things that we're committed to this year is to look at the common assessment data, because now that we have that, it's being implemented and we can utilize that. We want to make sure that we're not pushing kids that aren't ready to go to Algebra I. So, we're, we're having those conversations as well, because, you know, one of the things that's really important to us is you can't have kids take a course they're not ready for. And it starts with alignment, but it also starts with making sure that, that they have the skills, the baseline skills to take Algebra I. Um, so, that being said, um, I also wanted to show you this slide. This, again, is showing the proficiency rates. Uh, but one of the things that we always take a look at, at the high school is the student growth percentile. And as you can see, there's been a 10% growth in these students in terms of their math skills from eighth grade to 10th grade. So that's, that's good news. We want to see that number increasing, and we're certainly seeing that at the, uh, high school level. Some of the things that we're doing, it's kind of consistent with what we're doing across the board at the high school, is, um, our common assessments were developed over the course of the year, and this is really the first year that they have been, they're going to be implemented. And, um, we're working with our teachers to give them, um, the right tools to collect that data. I know that you guys know that we're doing a pilot in terms of, um, mastery and illuminate to see which one of those...
Software to replace that, wouldn't it?
Software programs to help us crunch the numbers and kind of get a better targeted idea of where our deficiencies are. Uh, at the high school, we purchased, um, a software program called Grade Cam, um, because the pilot is not set in place yet, but we still thought it was important to give teachers the tools to, to analyze data, so we have that going. So that is going to be utilized to, um, help us understand where our gaps and strengths are at the high school. Um, one of the things I'm really happy with our math, um, department, they work very collaboratively together. Um, in the past year, you, couple of years, we've seen some changes in the math department. We had a lot of teacher, a couple of teachers who are long-term subs, which I think, um, we're starting to feel a little bit of that, that pinch, but I'm very pleased with the new hires that we had at the math, um, math department in the last couple of years. So we have a strong cohesive math department that is consistent. Um, they are going to be working on this year, their professional learning communities, on mathematical practices that focus on math communication. Um, one of the things that can, comes out of the Common Core are the mathematical practices. And one of the most important things that they recommend is that to give kids the opportunity to talk out the math with each other, that they are also given the opportunity to apply math to real-world concepts, and that they're given, um, the ability to try out math from different perspectives. So there's not always like one right way to do it. So our math department this year is going to be focusing on that particular practice. How do you get kids to communicate mathematical practices in the classroom? And that's a, a huge foundation in the Common Core. Um, one of the things that Frank and RJ and myself did over the summer is, um, we took a look at, um, research in terms of effective math instruction in high schools across the country. And it all came back to those mathematical practices. They're called different things, but, um, it all came back to those. So, uh, we've been doing some research on that. We are meeting with our math department, actually, tomorrow. Administrators and math department are getting together, and we're going to take a look at the data. We're also going to take, uh, do a little informal kind of problem analysis amongst the department in terms of where are we with these mathematical practices? What are we seeing in the classroom? And what are some things that we need to do better in order to increase, um, the level of achievement with our students in math? Uh, so that, those are kind of like where we're headed. Uh, one of the things that I shared with the math department, um, this year was that my communications with colleges across the country, um, is that we're starting, we're, they're really seeing a push, a need to push students to increase their mathematical thinking. And so I shared some of that research with my math department. And so, uh, I think that's, you know, we talk, as administrators, that's our professional learning goal this year, is to really hone in on what's going on with our math department and help our teachers and our students improve in those areas, so.
My big concern is we're in the eighties, and a lot of our peer school systems, they're, they're in the nineties.
Are you talking about law? What schools are you talking about?
Um, not just on that, like, Rambie, I think, was ninety, I think ninety-two, ninety-four, something like that.
So, one of the things we look at, and it's important to look at, is our dark cohort. And the state of Massachusetts Department of Elementary Secondary Ed, um, you can't always assume that we're, that schools locally are going to have the same subgroups that we have, so the percentages of kids who are low-income versus special education. And so what the state did was they put us in a cohort of high schools that are like us in enrollment and all those subgroups that I, I just explained. So in terms of schools that are like us, we're, we're right in the middle of the path. And it's certainly not, not a position not, we want to be in. I think that's why we're trying to this year, really make that a school-wide focus from the, from the administrative perspective. Um, it's also a district issue. I think, you know, we have, we've been talking about it a lot, that, that, um, we're not exactly where we want to be, but I think we're doing great things in terms of trying to figure out where the answer is to that. I think that the transition to the Common Core has certainly, you know, you know, think about this right now, I mean, that middle school's taking Park, we're still taking MCAS, we just migrated to a new textbook last year. There's all these variables of change that I think, um, until we get into a groove, I think we're going to see, feel a little bit of a pinch, but I'm not worried about it. I, I'm really confident in our math teachers. Like I said, we, we're going to groove right now, we've got a strong team. I think that they're committed to, uh, our math department is one, I mean, you guys know Mr. Gonzalez, he's very competitive, and, um, and so our other math teachers, so they're on it, and they want to, they want to make sure that, you know, we're not in the middle of the path, and that's what we're working on this year.
My guess is we probably did not reach our goal this year in math, correct?
Um, did we, Valerie, did we?
No, we had to go up like four or five points from where we were, so we went...
But I think that was consistent in a lot of schools in terms of the percentages.
One thing I would say to Mr. Smith, uh, is I really would like to see SMART goals, uh, include math K through 12. We're looking forward to seeing, especially we know at the K through eight level, we would be seeing that, but if we could be consistent, I mean, a SMART goal from the high school would be nice too.
But I, I know that Berchlin's made a lot of changes, and by their changes, hopefully you're going to start seeing those kids coming in where they've been at Berchlin all three years. I mean, that's coming next year, right? We'll be back great kids, and, um, I'm assuming things are changing and evolving.
I think the big piece is, as a district, uh, making sure that the curriculum is scaffolded effectively, um, to ensure that at each grade level, there, the foundations are being set. So by the time they get to the high school, um, you know, there's a nice consistent level of that. Um, and I do think that, um, as far as I've been here, it's the strongest collaboration that we've had, um, with, with the middle school and the central office, and I might need Central Leslie, Gordon, and Valerie, in terms of taking a look at, you know, what, what the issue is and rolling up our sleeves and really trying to do something about it.
And I know it's hard, because it seems like such a long way off to see results.
Yes.
And you want to see it immediately, and you don't. But my other question then is a little offset, just in terms of how does this all prepare the student for the SATs? Is it...
Well, it's two different tests, first of all, but I get, again, I go back to, if we focus on the math methods, which are really rigorous, um, are really college-centered, if we focus and committed to improving that, I think that's where you're going to see the gains. I mean, we always say we don't teach to the test.
Right.
We teach to...
Because I hear the parents use that term a lot.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, we have to report to you about our MCAS scores, and it's definitely a valid, uh, barometer of what's going on at the high school, but it's not the only barometer. I can point out too, I mean, look at, uh, the number of our students that are at our math meets that are scoring, we're outperforming schools across the region in terms of competitions. I mean, we have kids that are scoring our AP math scores, we're off the charts. I mean, we, we are succeeding in, in a lot of grade areas, but we want to make sure that we hit that average of all of our students, and that's, that's important to us. So, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction, and I think we have the players in place. And when I mean that, I mean our math department. I think that, I think this year, they're, they're really going to push things up to another level.
Man, I think the, the other thing to consider, excuse me, is we don't know what the future of the SAT is going to be either. I mean, there's a lot of colleges that aren't even looking at us anymore.
Right, or the ACTs, that's the other thing.
Well, they're, they're just, they're going to look at regular, you know, transcripts. They're not going to look at any of these tests, any of the tests, because in some of their minds, it, it muddies the, it muddies the picture. So, I mean, yeah, I, I like hearing everything, and, you know, I'm a little concerned about where we are, but I, I see progress being made.
One of the things I will tell you, um, that came out of our principal advisory committee and our discussion with the math department, and I think it's fair to bring it up now, nothing's set in stone, one of the variables that we haven't talked about, and we are starting to talk about, is block scheduling. Because one of the things that we did is we started to look at the research of the schools who were outperforming us within our dark cohort, the schools that are like it. And when you look at their scheduling, they're doing math all year round. And so, um, you know, that matters. I mean, you think about that, if a kid comes in and takes Algebra I, um, in the fall of their freshman year, and they don't take it, like, you know, the next level of course till the spring, that's a, that's a long time to not touching math and talking math. So, um, our, our principal advisory committee, as well as the math department, is starting to say, hey, guys, is this the time that we start, you know, taking a look at that? So, we'll keep you posted on that.
Yeah, it'll all, it'll all make a difference.
How did the, um, I hear that more kids than ever took the PSAT, which was in school.
Yes, 280.
Which was great.
Yeah.
Which would be good, because it'll, more kids took it. You'll probably see the scores go lower because more kids took it, but that's a good thing. But I was wondering what you guys thought of the test, if anybody got to look at it? Because I'm assuming it's the new one, the PSAT.
I did not look at it, because I'm not sure if yours and mine is a...
Oh, you took it like after all this is done, you can't look at the book.
But, you know, one of the things we did talk about as well, um, I didn't talk to Gordon and Pam, and I just kind of give them a heads up, is that we'd like to offer the SAT, I don't want to say mandatory, but we want all our sophomores to take it. And we were hoping to, um, do it during the school day, because it definitely gives kids more the opportunity to do that. A lot of schools pay for it, which is something that we don't currently do right now, might be something they want to look at in the future, but, you know, anytime you can, um, give kids the opportunity to practice these skills is, is a good thing. So, it's just another thing we have on the table.
All good stuff.
And you have science for us now, Dr. Flon?
Uh, science is always so complicated, and I, and I think you all know that, um, the scores that are reported, they're, they're kind of delayed getting to us. So the scores that you see in front of you right now, um, really reflect a year and a half, yeah, it was a 2013, 14 data. Um, so, when, when Frank and I, we crunched the numbers for this, the sophomore classroom last year, we agree, we can't report that to you right now, because it's not, it's not part of the state's reporting system.
They report it with the cohort, so the sophomores who took it as freshmen is the data that you're seeing now.
And because we're on block scheduling, it kind of throws out how it's all reported.
Is this the first semester biology students or the second semester biology students?
Two years.
Two years ago.
You report that, right.
Yeah, it's two years.
The full year of 13, 14, because it gets reported with the cohort.
Oh, so, but it's, but it's all the students during that?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's two years ago, yeah.
Two years ago.
So getting all the kids who took, took math and English last year, it's all their scores on the science from two years ago.
Two years ago, freshman year.
Yeah.
So they're, so, they're juniors now.
Right, I understand that.
So, what we, we are doing very well in science, we continue to do well in science. I can tell you that from the, what Frank and I ended up having to do is, we do get the itemized reports of all the students, so we actually sat there and counted every advanced and proficient and needs improvement, and it was improvement, so we're super excited, but I can't share that with you right now. So, um, but what you see in front of you is, um, like I said, students from two, two years ago. Um, we are seeing some great, some great gains. Um, one of the things that the science department is, um, very committed to right now is, um, they, um, consistently, and, and Mr. Chair, you know, some of the players that we're talking about, they, they look at the standards, they break them down, um, they take a holistic approach, also very itemized approach to the standards, and, uh, one of the things that they're transitioning out is, is the next generation science standards, and actually, Valerie, Tim and I, Tim Allen at the Berchlin, we met this week to kind of strategize our next steps as a secondary, secondary level in terms of how, making sure that our curriculums are reflective of those standards, making sure that we have the resources, um, for that as well. And so, um, I think the height, the, in terms of the high school science, I'm very, very pleased with the direction that we're going in. As you can see here, no students failed two years ago, so that's, that's good news.
I think we are in use now, those are some...
Yeah, exactly. So, again, I'm trying to, our, our big thing this year is, is utilizing the common assessments to kind of figure out where our strengths and gaps are. Um, the science department, their PLC work for this year is they decided that they wanted to focus on developing inquiry-based instruction in labs, because that is such a big, um, element of the next generation science standards, as well as the Common Core. And so, um, they're going to be meeting, um, together as groups, and they're going to be designing, um, lessons that kind of hit that inquiry-based focus. So, that's how the science department is going to be addressing, um, improving science.
What does that mean, the inquiry-based instruction?
So, one of the things that the science department is working on is trying to infuse more real-world kind of problems into their lessons. So, students are given scientific kind of question and they have to utilize their content knowledge or skills, but also each other, the collaboration piece, in trying to give them, you know, that focus.
And a big part of inquiry-based learning is like for a lab, for instance, that in a traditional lab, you're given the steps of how you're supposed to get to the outcome. In the inquiry-based approach, the students create the steps.
Okay.
So, they have to...
So, which might have a different way of going about solving the problem.
It was a high component of critical thinking and, you know, we're trying to get kids to think that there's more than one way to get to the right answer.
And not always just take that formulaic approach of step by step by step. It's forced them to think more beyond what they typically are in science class.
I know that biology, what, science MCAS, but do we still have a small group of kids taking chemistry MCAs?
Maybe.
One last year.
One taken last year.
Probably a transfer, I'm going to guess.
By choice.
By choice, really?
Really. You get the choice?
Not really.
Well, dealt that way.
You're benevolent kind.
I guess the bottom line for us is that, you know, we have some things that we're really proud of. I think in terms of literacy at the high school, we're really, I think that the hard work of our teachers to ensure that reading and writing is everybody's business is really paying off. That's, that's clear. In science, or in science, I think that we're in really great shape. Math, we're definitely not where we feel we should be, but we are strategizing and working collaboratively with our teachers to make sure that those scores go up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very nice presentation. This time, Mr. Fonseca is going to represent us with the capital plan committee, so thank you, Mr. Fonseca.
Okay, and I will see everybody later on.
See you later on. No prisoners, Bell, no prisoners. So, we're moving on now to 6.1, review of the ELPS Capital Plan.
Okay. In your packets, in your packets you have two sheets.
Oh, excuse me, I skipped, excuse me. I meant to, sorry, Mr. Superintendent, it's 5 for 1.2 to report on meeting with the recreation commission and community preservation.
Sure. Okay. Sorry, I was jumping down the capital plan as well. So, since our last meeting, Chairperson and I met with our town recreation commission and our community preservation committee, that actually was our second meeting, and all of you attended the first meeting. In both situations, what we were doing is following up on our projects, our playground projects for the three elementary schools, Meadowbrook, Maple Shade, and Mountain View. And two weeks ago, when we met with recreation, we went through in detail with all the members of their commission, what the projects entail, how they came about, the fact that in all three situations, we're looking to do something that's not only good for the students of the school, but it's good for the children of the town. And I think the recreation commission certainly understood that. They asked some very good questions and at the end, they unanimously endorsed us continuing to move forward to community preservation and then to special town meeting this evening.
Community preservation also became unanimous with the second one.
Correct. So, we revisited, everybody was there?
Yeah.
Good questions on both committees. And one of, one of the pieces that came out of the recreation commission is that they would like to coordinate more with the school department on recreation, but things such as fields, facilities, and so forth. And so, I think we're going to continue. I think we have a pretty good working relationship with Colin Drury, who is the director of the recreation department, but we'd like to increase that and make sure that we're improving on that.
Yeah, they, they made a motion that she would elect a rep from their board. They'd like us to do the same thing to elect a rep from our boards, that if need be, there wouldn't be a lag in decision-making, that it could be a board-to-board discussion to kind of move things along. So, I had asked that Deidre, she was interested in doing that, being representative of the school community to the recreation commission. And so, I put that forth. So, do I have a motion to have Ms. May who represent us with the recreation commission?
So, move.
So, move, they have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Or do you accept?
I do accept it, yes.
Hon, yes.
Yes, it is.
May I have a vote? Are all those in favor, please? Say yes.
Yes.
Supposed, unanimous, oh, four zero, Mr. Slade.
Who's the representative from the recreation?
I don't know that they've selected one yet.
I think we left.
Yeah, they didn't make a motion.
Just curious.
Well, what I can do is I will talk with Colin Drury, find out, and I can make sure that they're aware that Ms. May who we are, we is on...
So, we should put that on our list probably for the future.
Right.
Good point.
Thank you. That takes here presentations. We're now moving to our business, review of the ELPS Capital Plan fiscal 2017. Mr. Smith?
Okay. In your packets, you have the traditional spreadsheet that you've seen for a number of years. And you also have a breakout of just the FY 2017 projects by school and district. I do have to apologize for one mistake, the, under district-wide, so if you go down on the, the listing of FY 2017 projects, I should have stadium bleachers there. That is a FY 2017 project. And I did not copy it from the spreadsheet onto the list, so that's one addition. In putting this together, and we'll have one more time to look at this at the November 2nd meeting, the principals all have met with town facilities manager and also worked with Mrs. Blair and me as they're looking at different projects. One of the things that we certainly know is that 17,394,000 is probably not going to be voted our way. However, the movement of those projects, I think in their discussions with Mr. Fenny, it was important that we once again talk about the fact that you take something like the, the very first project, the Meadowbrook portable modular classrooms, replacing that with a permanent structure, that we've been bumping that out, but the architects that had conducted and then put together our facility study had made that a priority. There were two priorities, if you remember, the, the discussions that we had when that project, that facility study was being put together and then finally reporting out on their findings. One priority was this building, moving to try to get some type of building project through the Mass School Building Authority for the high school. And then the other priority, before you even got into sort of secondary plans for elementaries, was doing something with the two modular trailer classrooms that we have, one at Meadowbrook and one at Mountain View. And two years ago, if you remember when we sat with capital planning somewhere either in December or January, and usually Mr. Fenny comes with us in those meetings, I think the question was put directly to him, can you keep those modular portable classrooms going? And unfortunately, puts them on the spot, but they do exceptional work. And so, he said, sure, I mean, we can keep anything going. The unfortunate part to it is that what's that atmosphere in the classroom like? I mean, you can keep it going, but what's it like compared to other classrooms? And so, how long can you place the classrooms that are in those areas, in that area, when other classrooms are, you know, brighter, better airflow, that kind of thing, not sinking?
Right. Also gets more expensive to maintain too, as they get older.
Right. So, I mean, one of the things that you should know about all these prices, and some will be adjusted. I did meet, for a long time, with Mr. Fenny on Friday. And so, you already had this in your packet. I didn't make changes to hand out to you tonight, but I will for the November 2nd meeting. It's not going to change extensively, but we wanted to make, check all our pricing to make sure that, okay, where are we getting that? Does it go back to the facility study, or does it go back to, and say, the roofing prices that are on there? Some of that's facility study, some of that is working with the Garland Company, who Mr. Fenny had come out to do a study of all municipal building roofs. Obviously, five of those are schools. And those have now come into, in a number of cases, sort of a priority situation. So, something like the Meadowbrook roof replacement moved out the renovate, exterior renovation for the windows and doors. That could have been a FY 17 project, but in discussions with Mr. Fenny and Lisa Deacon, that seems to be more important. They're experiencing more leaks, they're experiencing more breakdown of their roof membrane, and so, it's something that they wanted to make sure is a priority.
So, as we sit here, I mean, our, I mean, I know we're going to sign a priority list next week, but is our first two recommendations going to be the modular classrooms? And that's, that's, that's close to $3 million.
Right. This is, this is simply for your information.
Oh, I know.
I mean, you certainly next, between this meeting and next meeting, you have, you know, as we've done in the past, you can move them out in fiscal years, but I think to some of the points that have come up in the discussions with the different buildings is even though we're not going to get, you know, no one's expecting to get $17 million worth of capital projects, do we go in saying that, you know, similar to, I think, Mr. Thompson's point at the last meeting, that these, these issues aren't going away, and in terms of the roofs, they're getting worse. For the high school, it's a huge sum of money to replace the whole roof. That's why we also looked at, the worst area of the high school roof is what Mr. Fenny is referring to as the freshman wing. And we probably could do that for 192,000, replace that membrane. But they're going to have to strip those two layers of that. So, we've already, at one point, I think in 1993, put a layer over existing roof. And so, now all that has to be stripped off.
They can't go over it again.
Yeah. So, that's part of why your cost is so high.
I think the question may arise when we do start talking with capital of how it relates to last year's five-year plan versus this year's five-year plan, because I don't think we had 17 million on.
No, it was probably closer to either seven or 12. It's, it's because we moved things back into the discussion.
Right. And I think that's a valid part of the discussion, so...
The roofs, no, are they not? The roofs were probably further out.
Right.
And they have become, and that's, yeah, they've become a big priority. And I know it's something that Mr. Fenny was adamant about, and he got the Garland Company to come out, I think it was last January, to conduct a study of all roofs, which actually was helpful.
We reviewed that, so we finally got the reports, we reviewed that. So, I just updated the statement of interest with the MSBA with the, this section that dealt with the high school roof. And so, now you have our, it's not in the packet, this is something I sent to the MSBA today. You have our statement of interest that outlines roofing issues, and now you have a separate report that they're going to attach to it from the Garland Company with pictures showing where it's breaking down.
With that $6 million figure?
Yeah, the $6 million figure is, yeah, coming from them.
So, that went to MSBA as well?
Um...
The estimate for replacement?
The pictures and the need for replacement, the $6 million wasn't on the report.
Oh.
That's, that I got from Mr. Fenny.
I see.
Yeah.
You know, with the roofs getting, they did degrade interior of the building too. There's things you're not maybe even seeing. That leakage between walls and stuff like that, that might take a month or a year, whatever, to show. And so...
I'm concerned about the high school parking lot, too. You driven through that lately?
Oh, it's careful. Go nice and slow.
Yeah, I know.
Well, after last year, it really got...
Yeah.
It last much was...
It's harsh.
Yeah.
You've got some real tough decisions to make here.
And the thing that is too, in the, in the town, and it's unfortunate, you have to think about liability too. If anybody hurts themselves on something like, like, you think the parking lot's the last thing you should be doing, but people are quick to see penalties too, when that's, anytime.
So, what is our next step for November 2nd?
So, in order to get these, the fiscal year 17 projects need to all be individually entered into, now it's a digital entry. So, for the next meeting, hold on, November 2nd, you know, I will update all pricing so that what is on the spreadsheet and on your listing sheet is what we feel is the accurate pricing. And then, depending on how the discussion and your thoughts go at the next meeting and then the final vote, I will upload however many projects you feel we should upload for fiscal year 17. And then going into sort of the next agenda item for this evening, we should probably start looking at what's Plan B, and that may take longer. It's not going to meet the deadline of capital planning, which is the week of November 2nd. However, it, it's something that, and I think this was your point at the last meeting, Mr. Thompson, that, you know, we need to not only discuss as a school department, but then start discussing with the various committees that govern and move capital projects forward.
For this capital plan, is it, do we, as a committee, do we want Mr. Smith and Ms. Blair to come in with recommendations, or we want to keep it open and then we'll make the decision on the priority list?
Are they as, was this capital's interest in a priority list now, or do they want these submissions?
Uh, no, all basically, the only instructions we've gotten so far is to make sure that we upload all individual projects.
So, we have time then?
I think we put them all in.
Yeah, put them all in, so that they're on.
Putting, you know, I'm not adverse to the idea of keeping the Meadowbrook exterior renovations in there. If that was on this year's capital plan, I understand in reality that, you know, once another million dollars, but it just solidifies the need that this needs to be done, and it's a huge amount of money.
1.8.
Right. But why, it was on the FY 17 proposal, let's keep it on there.
Yeah.
And the other things are put on because of the need, but that doesn't diminish the need. Yes, it might be slightly less important, but there's some serious deficiencies in it. So, let's talk about the whole number, because next year, already a $5 million, it's not like we're looking at half a million for next year or 250,000, you know, okay, let's push it off to next year. Next year is unachievable already. I mean, we're, we're at 17 now and five next year. And we might as well put it all in there and stick with what we've asked for.
Sure.
And then have that discussion.
If we bump it and move it, they're going to be like, well, why'd you bump it and move it? It wasn't important to you evidently. Well, it's like, well...
Well, no.
It is important to us, it's just we're putting tires out.
It's around trying to be fiscally responsible, what's, what's most urgent at this point.
Well, let's have that discussion, I think, because we're going to need to figure out, and we're all going to, in the end, need to be fiscally responsible.
Right.
And so, let's figure out collectively, and let's look at the whole picture and...
Because it's irrelevant, obviously.
It slightly is, yeah. But, but it starts the discussion. And so, we can say, all right, we know this deadline is coming, and we know, we'll put in for the 17 or 18 million dollars in projects, but the last several years, we've funded about a million dollars, so...
Right, for the whole town.
Realistic, yeah, for the whole town.
I know.
This is the reality of it, so...
I know.
I'd say that's the...
So, if you, the Russians, Mr. Smith, do you have that?
Sure. I will set that up. The one item that's, it's not going to be a big cost savings, but Berchlin did say you could move the carpets out to fiscal year 18. I thanked them for that, to do that.
Where are those carpets? Are those the ones in the...
The library.
These are in the, the library, in the, what formerly was the computer room. Still one is being used as a computer room in the course room. It's, it's not similar to this where you have the seams, but you have the bunching starting to come up. And so, it's a question, when do you do that?
When, was that the original carpet to the building?
Yes.
I didn't know if it had been replaced at some other point, so, yeah.
15 years, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Ms. Blair, off set for that next meeting. What was 7.1 discussion of future capital planning? We had ended up with a pretty involved discussion, but what do we do with these major, major projects that are staring at us? And Mr. Smith and I didn't want to just let that discussion hang there, so to speak. So, we came up with a three-step plan. We like you to look at it. Notice that there's a big word there, draft.
Yes.
And obviously, our first step is what we're doing now, is talking about FY 27 projects, and we'll have that completed by November 2nd. But two and three, take a look at that. Look at, maybe from now, November through March, develop a very succinct plan of all the type of capital products that are needed for each school. And as, once we have that list and we've reviewed it, the next step would be number three, start to meet with the appropriate board, the appropriations, capital planning, DPW, et cetera, decide to draft some type of schedule or plan to address these major needs. So, just take a look at that, see if there's something you want to, we always bring this back for a second reading. Is this something you want to fine tune? Is this something that, are we missing a step? So, I really emphasize the word draft there.
When did we hear from MSBA last year on the final selection?
We didn't actually hear from them until, I believe, late December. And there wasn't, it wasn't a written notice. And then, I think there was brief discussion in their January meeting, and then that was official.
That was a reason for the...
Well, within the March timeframe is really my question.
Right, yes, yeah. And I spoke with Diane Sullivan, who's our liaison, last week. I let her know that we were discussing capital planning the last few meetings, we're going to continue to do so. I put in another plea to have someone from the MSBA come out and visit Islam Meadow. But I also wanted to ask, can I update our statement of interest with this report from the roofing company? She said that you can. So, we sent that. After I went through it with Mr. Fenny on Friday, we sent it off this morning. And in the letter that I sent, I again put in the plea that we really would like someone from the, that's what they're deciding now. She told me in the month of October, they decide, okay, we're going to go out and see these districts who have put in a statement of interest. And my concern is, even though she says, don't read anything into the fact that you haven't gotten an email yet, is that even though the official decision may be made December, if we haven't gotten an email to come see the building, that the unofficial decision has already been made. So, I put that in the letter, inviting them to come out. I also coupled that, the fact that our roof is, is failing faster than maybe we had portrayed in the statement of interest, and the pictures show this, combined with the fact that you have an electrical system that's at capacity, puts our, our students in a very urgent situation. And so, we'll see.
Would you like us to bring this back again, just to take one more look at it for a second reading?
There's an argument at it, you know, I think Bill may have some input.
I was just going to say that, we don't have Bill here, maybe after his meeting with capital, we'll have some insight.
Okay. And if there are...
But I definitely think it's important to do.
Steps or...
I like the idea of doing it. I think we need to get our act together, and then we need to involve everybody else in the town.
That's what we thought, that we talked about, let's try to put, let's try to crystallize and add something down.
Well, they might want to do it on a subcommittee level too, and it's probably part of the discussion as we move forward. But in order to get things moving, and to get, you know, as many people in the discussion as possible.
Right.
You know, if you move us to, to think about a subcommittee versus full committee, a full committee.
Okay.
Sometimes it takes more effective.
Like, if you could get, like, a couple members here, and maybe Bruce Feeney and you folks, then, then you can kind, almost like we do with the policy subcommittee, kind of go through things and get it organized and meet, and then bring it back to everybody, and then go back to...
Right.
What point do we involve the entire, all the other departments capital in or whatnot?
We can't buy, be naive to the fact that there's other needs within the town.
Oh, exactly.
So, it's worth the discussion collectively. You know, just talk about a ladder truck for the fire pot room potentially, or, or a bunch of other things.
There was town hall out there too. There was a town hall.
So, great.
All right, anything else? You know, that's, that is it. Okay, at this time, I take a motion to adjourn to Mr. Thompson.
Uh, so...
To move, to start a second before we adjourn. I want that, Mr. Tilly, for being here again. Appreciate your input. And Jake Brady, thank you for filming us. We appreciate it. Happy to see that. All in favor of adjourning?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Four zero, abstain for Bill. Thank you very much, everybody.